Yeah, we're all set.
Okay. Good afternoon. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. It is Tuesday, February 16, 2016, and it is now 3:00. First order of business, I pledge allegiance, I'd like to ask selectmen to come lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gary. Item two is the public forum, limited to three minutes, aren't any agenda items. Anybody wishing to address the board? See none, we'll move along to item three, which is the approval of our minutes. Three sets of minutes to approve. First is January 25, 2016, which was a special meeting. Do we have a motion, please? So move to second. Any additions or corrections?
Yes.
Gary?
Karen, at the bottom of page two, that should say Quantapod Hills, not Lake Quantapod.
Okay.
See none, I'll take a vote to approve the minutes as corrected. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved, thank you. Three dot two, motion to approve the minutes of January 28, which was a special meeting. So move to second. Any additions or corrections? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good on this, thank you. Three dot three, February 1, 2016, which was a regular meeting.
So move to second.
Any additions or corrections? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Item four, Finance Director Sheila Valano, to receive the monthly report for January. Good afternoon, Sheila.
Good afternoon.
You say good morning.
I know. Okay. I have a few changes, but we'll get to that. Start with revenue.
Yep.
Okay. Honey?
Take it away.
Actually, why don't I do this? Let me pass out, I know, Joe, you had a question about this, so I'm gonna pass out a revised, just cover page to the revenue. And it's not that there was anything that was incorrect, but I just wanted to make the numbers a little bit more on an apples-to-apples comparison. So we're gonna use this report now. So on a, as of January 31, 2016, we've recognized 96.5% of our budget versus 94.6% last year. Tax collections is the area where I made the adjustment, and it's only for timing purposes. As you know, we have one extra day in February to collect the taxes on a current basis. So when you looked at the original report in your packet, it didn't look so great. It looked, it was 91.8% versus 95.4% last year, and that's a pretty scary difference. And all it is is timing, so I took the receipts through February 2nd, February 1 of this year and February 2 of last year, I think that's how it went, and I made it comparable. So now we have numbers that actually compare favorably, 97.4% this year, 97.5% last year. Okay?
So we actually collect 6% of revenues on the last day?
Yes.
God bless the tax collectors.
What it is, is it's some of the escrows that come in by wire.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, well, that money's the last thing. Right, Gary?
At point oh one, it doesn't make a lot of difference one way or the other, but yes, they will.
They will, right.
Other revenues, look, Fire Department, 59.7% versus 50.2% last year, it's up. I tend to look at the bigger departments. Building Department is where, it's higher than where it should be at this point in the year, at 58.3, 65.6. Last year was a big year, we exceeded our budget because of, you know, reasons we all know, commercial development activity was very strong and continues to be strong, which is why they are exceeding their projection at this point in the year. And Town Clerk is exceeding their budget for January, they are at 64.3% versus 53.1%. And we checked those numbers and double-checked, and they are correct. So revenue, it looks good.
Any questions on revenue? Okay.
A little expenditures.
Yep.
We have expended 63.9% of our budget versus 65.8% last year at this time. That's a good sign. In addition, I have received actual checks from BEMA for a little over $100,000 that have not been applied here yet. I will decide in February how to apply it. I was thinking that I, we were about to record it last week until we had some snowstorm, and then I thought, well, maybe if, that's a good place to put it, would be in Public Works overtime budget if they need it. But we're gonna wait and see, you know, in the next couple of weeks what that brings, and otherwise, we'll allocate it to the department as it was originally used. But it was last year, so it doesn't, it's extra money for us this year that we haven't recorded as receivable. Most of the departments look good for where they should be at this point in the year. I don't really see anything that's troublesome. Any of the departments that are over, usually it's either a timing issue or the encumbrances. Do you have any questions about?
You're confident that, you know, something like assessment appeals is a timing issue? I mean, they're running higher, and this is the year we expect them to run lower.
I think that assessment appeals is basically very close to being completed. Most of the appeals are closed, there's only a few left, so I think that they've already, we've already incurred the larger part of the billing in the first half of the year.
You will see a lot of overtime next month when we get the February reports for Public Works, and it's expected in the month of February, so you can see a little bit of a pump. A lot, a lot of overtime, 'cause I know they were out last night, I think they were called out around 3:00 in the afternoon, yesterday afternoon. It's, it's just part of the season.
Yeah. See, as at the end of January, their overtime was at 47.8%, so a little bit lower, not a whole lot, but, okay.
And that's week budget for us.
Okay. Any other questions?
Any questions on expenses?
On medical, when I prepared the reports, we did not have the catastrophic claim report from Anthem, which I did get from Mitch this morning. So we are now at, we, the amount that has been covered by the staff losses up from $455,000, which is on your report, to $563,594. Even so, we had a fairly reasonable month, actually, the second lowest of the seven-month period. And so we're still projecting a surplus for the year of $468,250, bringing our fund balance to over $1.1 million at the end of June.
I didn't hear that number on the catastrophic claims.
The total cumulative amount is $563,594, so it went up over $100,000, $110,000.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Anything else you want to bring to our attention?
That's it for the budget.
Okay. Four dot two. I don't know what that is.
That's the Pope calling me.
Hey, call!
I need your help.
See, that doesn't happen in morning meetings.
All right, all right, all right.
I'm gonna, well, I'll take one back.
Discuss and take possible action on the five-year capital plan.
So this is the package, the budget package, and at the very end, and everything here you've seen, except for the transmittal letter on the top and the back, is the capital plan, the last document that's flipped.
Okay. You wanna go over this?
Well, basically, it's very much, we've been talking about this for the past couple of months, the changes that we made to the department plan are highlighted, or they're, you know, highlighted in bold in 2018. Those are the changes that we made to the department's request, and basically, we just re, you know, restructured their, their timing. This is the whole plan, not just general fund, it includes the bonded projects and special funded projects. And the last page actually gives the breakdown of the financing between the, the projected financing between general fund, bond, and the grants.
Okay. The letter you see in front is the transmittal letter that will be presented to the Board of Finance this evening, which is the official submission of our budget, our budget being the Board of Selectmen's budget and the town budget, that we approve at our last selectmen's meeting, that we are required to present to the Board of Selectmen, are required to present to the Board of Selectmen this evening. Board of Finance, excuse me, Board of Finance, thank you, Gary. But the letter is really just the, sums up the budget package, and that's your information there, okay? But we have to take, we should take some action on the capital, five-year capital plan, which now, as Sheila said, includes the items that we have moved over from 2017 to 2018, and then becomes our plan moving forward from 2017 to 2021. So, open that for discussion, keeping in mind that the 2017 is already in the budget that we're presenting, that I'm presenting this evening. Anything?
You need a motion?
I would like a motion, yeah. Give me a second.
Are we moving it or moving it to the Board of Finance?
No, we're just moving it for ourselves.
For ourselves, okay. Recommending it to the Board of Finance.
I don't even think that it's a, it's a recommendation to the Board of Finance.
No, this isn't, this is for.
Yeah, it's really just a plan, I mean, the, the numbers that you see in 2018 through '21 are just a plan.
It's a plan.
They're not really authorized.
So, Charles, with the motion, Gary, you second it? Okay. Is Carl coming back?
He's going his way to Rome.
She is, he's not going alone.
I'll see.
Okay. If some personal item or emergency, we'll just move along. Okay. Motion is made, seconded, any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to bring to our attention, Sheila?
No, I think that's all for the minute, so to me.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Energy Task Force. This is an item that we probably will have to table, consider and take possible action on an RFQ, third-party engineering saving performance contracting consultant for the town municipal and school buildings. I am told by email today, since I wasn't in the building this morning, I was at a cost convention, that the Energy Task Force is not ready to make a recommendation, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to table this item.
So move to second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion is table, item is table. Okay. Item six, In-House Council Purchasing Manager, Pam Millman, six dot one, consider and take possible action on the town's participation in the C-PACE program and set a possible meeting date of March 21, 2016, 8:15 a.m. at the Guilford Town Hall. Good afternoon, Pam.
Good afternoon. We were gonna have someone from the Energy Task Force kinda talk about the energy piece of this a little bit more, but I did review the resolution and the agreement. I think you have in your packet, I had like a bullet point kinda synopsis of the agreement and what it's about, and I think it might make sense for me to just read through that very quickly for the, you know, so the audience can understand it a little bit better. This is a voluntary energy program, and the municipality can choose not to participate, although several municipalities, 100-plus, have participated. C-PACE is the program, it stands for Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy, and it's to facilitate loan financing for energy improvements to commercial properties. To secure the financing, the Green Bank, which is a quasi-public agency established under the Connecticut General statutes, and the town enter into a C-PACE agreement. In our case, the legislative body must vote to participate, and that is a town meeting for this purpose, by virtue of statutes. According to C-PACE, the Columbus Club Association of Guilford wants to participate in this program. And the obligations of the municipality under the agreement include the following. Upon notice from Green Bank, the municipality levies the benefit assessment against the commercial property and places a lien to secure payment for the financing for the energy improvement to the commercial property. The town records the lien, and the Green Bank reimburses the town for the town clerk recording costs. Such benefit lien will be levied and collected by the town tax collector in the same manner as taxes. The lien shall be continued, recorded, and released in the same manner as taxes. Upon notice from the Green Bank, the municipality shall assign the lien to a third party as collateral for the loan. Municipality is to bill the property owner for the benefit assessment in the same manner as it bills for taxes. The municipality is required to segregate the funds collected for the benefit of the Green Bank. The municipality is required to pay the Green Bank for such payments no later than 30 days after the month in which they were collected. And the town is required to provide collection reports to Green Bank, and the Green Bank may audit. If the property owner is delinquent in payment of the benefit assessment, the municipality is required to give the Green Bank notice, a reasonable notice. The Green Bank may request that the town help with collection efforts. The town may choose not to take on that responsibility, which probably would be a good idea, not take on that responsibility. The town is required to notify, notify the Green Bank of any sale or assignment of its real property taxes, or any institution of a judicial foreclosure, or other proceeding against the property, if he's delinquent, if the property owner is delinquent in taxes. And we're supposed to give, use good faith efforts to assist the Green Bank in local marketing efforts for this program, not clear what that would involve. And the municipality should use good faith efforts to assist in gathering and providing information for the Green Bank to offer, sell, and issue bonds, or other obligations to provide the funds for the commercial disposable energy program. And for all of this, we get, they will pay us $500 annually, but they, there is a possibility to collect additional costs and expenses that the town may incur, such as the recorded costs. And that's, that's what it is.
I'm gonna ask the Economic Development Coordinator to come up and just give us a little bit of background on his, first of all, his views, and, and the Green Bank representatives have come before the EDC and given their pitch, why the town should be part of it, and then I'm gonna ask the tax collector to address us also, because it does involve her department. Brian, your first.
Well, I mean, it doesn't seem to be a high-risk kind of thing overall for the town, and certainly a ben, potentially a benefit for some of our commercial and industrial accounts that are in town. They also include multi-unit housing, apartment housing, if it's greater than five units. So, you know, we do have various businesses that could participate in this, could benefit from this. I mean, I think, you know, the idea of cleaner renewable energy, less expensive, more reliable possibly, you know, in a broader sense, it's creating some jobs in the industry for the people to do the installation and service work and things like that. I'm, I'm not actually aware of any contractors in Guilford that are authorized, but right across the border, Munger Construction for one is authorized to do C-PACE type of work, and he's done some work in, in Guilford. So, I mean, I think it's a, it's a good idea, and people that wanna take advantage of it. The Knights of Columbus is the first group that we've heard of in town, that, to Pam's point, we haven't really marketed this since we haven't been authorized yet. And I mean, we, from a marketing standpoint, I would just put this in kind of our toolkit from the economic development, we would, you know, our newsletters and make people aware in that fashion, and if it can help a business, run a better business, and be more profitable, and more cost-effective, I think it's a good thing.
Thank you. Okay. Debbie?
Debbie up there?
Oh, yeah. Debbie Valano's our tax collector.
While she's coming up, do we know who collects the interest on a defaulted lien? I mean, you know, typically on our taxes, we get one and a half a month. Do we get that, or does that go onto Green Bank?
I believe they said that. We sat in, I sat in on the conference call. There is no cost to the town. With our vendor quality data, they've already have a contract with the Green Bank, so they would provide the software, the program, and they would provide the training on it. I think it's a good thing for the town.
I guess the question that I had for you, which I'll raise again, is, do you see it being a burden on your department?
I don't think so. I, I don't know how many as will have, but I just, I think it's good that Guilford gets on board with it.
I have talked to a couple of my colleagues in other towns, and their, their towns are part of the program, and they, they think it works well. They haven't gotten many participants, like Brian mentioned, but it's good to have it available for their, their businesses and for residential properties that are multifamily. There are 100 and, last count, 110 towns that are part of the program, and 169 in the, in the state. So I would recommend that we go to a town meeting, because we do need a town meeting, and the purpose here today is to set the town meeting date, and we're not gonna make any other decision, what's set of the town meeting date. And at this point, I would, I would recommend that we set the town meeting and, and move along with it. It's, it doesn't hurt us to.
No, I don't think so. I mean, we won't be doing the collection work if they do become delinquent. Okay, it's a good thing.
Thank you.
I would move that we, the process of discussion, that we move it, that we set a town meeting date of March 21, at 8:15, to consider this.
Okay.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
My only question is just a sort of a caution that, and we, to my knowledge, haven't done it, but if we were to assign any of our tax liens to somebody else, point 12 is a caution that they might have a role in that, should we ever wanna decide to sell our tax liens to somebody for collection. Just keep that in mind.
Okay, good point.
I don't know, have we ever, is anybody here aware that we've ever done it?
Not that I'm aware of.
Cities typically do it because of the volume, but it's just, it's a caution to remember.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Pam. Item seven, Parks and Recreation Director, Rick Mate, consider and take possible action on, set a public hearing date for March 7, 2016, 8:30 a.m. at the Guilford Town Hall to receive comment, it's turn page, on an ordinance to amend the code of the Town of Guilford, Chapter 214, Parks and Public Places. Rick?
Hi, yeah, Jack Fenders, Parks and Recreation Commission Chairman is here, and Sue Robbins also members of the commission. And just came, wanna mention, we just had almost 300 kids in the community center, so winter fest, today was Winter Wonderland, a lot of things were scheduled outdoors, we moved indoors, and even room in the building was packed with kids, and it was a great activity and opportunity for parents to get their kids outside, or out of the house for a few hours.
Except the one day you didn't have snow.
Yeah, I know. But it worked out, we, we had to shift gears and move things inside. But so the current ordinance prohibits dogs off-leash anywhere in town, other than their own backyard, I suppose. And so, since we are gonna be having a dog park opening sometime, hopefully in the spring or summer, the Parks and Recreation Commission wanted to have the ordinance revised to allow dogs off-leash in the fenced area inside the dog park. And so Pam had written some proposed language for that, and the Parks and Recreation Commission approved it. I don't know if you have, you may have a copy of that, but it would allow for dogs to be off-leash inside the fenced area in the dog park.
I've got a couple of questions about the program. This refers to the dog park rules and regulations. Do you have a copy of those?
We don't yet, we will though. I mean, the dogs, before it's open, we'll have, they'll all be posted, rules and regulations, we gotta sign, they're posted.
Who bears the cost of the maintenance of the dog park? I understand that it's being built with volunteer labor and, and, but who's responsible for it once it's done?
Well, the committee that's doing the fundraising is hoping to raise enough money that'll go into the account that we have now set up with, through, through our department, Sheila. There'd be money in the future for, if there are any kind of repairs need done, the money will come out of that to pay for it. Very similar to when the playground was built out of Jacobs Beach, the Friends of Jacobs Beach Play State Committee, there was money left over, and then, I think I just spent the end of it this past year, we had for 10 years, we had money in there for any repairs we needed to make the playground. So the intent is that there would be, whatever money is left over would stay in that account for future maintenance. So if a fence breaks, or we need a new gate or whatever, money would be in there to do it.
But ultimately, it's the town's responsibility.
It's a town facility, yeah.
Is this gonna impact our insurance coverage in any way?
Not to my knowledge. I've, I've been in conversation with Joey Barber from Kerma, and some of the rules that we all have posted, they, they've given us rules that they just said we should implement in this. From my understanding, there's no, you know, Pam can maybe correct me on this, but there's no additional liability on the town, dog owners are responsible for their own dogs. I mean, it could happen on an athletic field, the dog could run loose, the dog bites a kid, it's the dog's, owner's responsibility, not the town.
The dog runs loose, it's a violation of the ordinance.
Well.
On a, on a ball field.
Sure.
That's a different situation.
But the owner's still responsible, no matter what, even in the dog park, they're responsible for their dog.
Okay. I don't know that, but I'll take your word for it for the time being.
Okay, that's my understanding of it.
What about people who have invisible fence and let their dogs out in the yard? Are they breaking the law because the dog isn't on a leash, or is the invisible fence considered to be like a weight?
Fence, maybe it's a fence, probably. On their own private property, we ain't have, dog is over it, and technically, I guess, it would be a violation, but invisible fence is a fence, I suppose.
Yeah.
Okay. So what do we need, a motion to move this on?
I need a motion to set a public hearing date, yeah.
I'll move it, so, oh, here, they go, it's the March 7th at 8:30. Is that?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Is there a second to that motion? Second, okay.
Is there a reason to do that different from the, I guess a public hearing is different from a town meeting.
That's correct.
You're gonna do one? Okay. So we're gonna have extra events in each of these. Rick, I greatly appreciate seeing a copy of the rules and regulations prior to that meeting.
Yeah, they may not be finalized, we'll, we'll get what's proposed.
Well, the point of clarification, Rick, we can't have a, correct me for a moment, Well, the point of clarification, Rick, we can't have a, correct me for a moment here, Pam, we can't have a public hearing without having it proposed.
Is it a public hearing, the rules and regulations, or just to have the dogs off-leash?
A public hearing is for it being off-leash.
Yeah.
Not necessarily for the rules.
I think it's a practice.
We should have the whole document. I mean, we've had this before for other, I mean, ordinance and stuff, with rules and regulations, that we want to propose to an amendment that are part of the, part of our ordinance, excuse me. We have seen the whole document, and I think it's only fair that we see the whole document.
I think it's practical.
I think it's practical, too.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it does say in accordance with the rules.
Yeah.
All right, so the next commission meeting is that evening, I think, and the rules and regulations have to be approved by the commission, I think, before we bring it to the board here.
Yeah.
And we need that night. Can we amend this to March 21st? Can we change it?
We could change it anywhere we want.
That makes sense. I mean, they don't need this until it's open, and I can hope it's spring or summer, so.
Right. So, if you want to amend the motion to March 21st?
March 2nd.
Okay.
Motion 1st. With the understanding that the rules and regulations will be circulated prior.
So now we have an amended motion on the floor, is there any further discussion? A call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. Item eight, Environmental Planner, Kevin McGee, discuss and take possible action on Guilford Land Trust gift of property to the town, and set a town meeting date of March 21st, 2016. Well, that's going to be a busy date, at 8:13 a.m., at the Guilford Town Hall, and set up the planning and zoning for mandatory referral on the GSS 8-24. Afternoon, Kevin.
Good afternoon.
Kevin, wait, after the meeting, because we have a conversation to, and that email I sent you. Okay, Kevin?
All right. Over the past several months, the Land Acquisition Commission has been reviewing a 0.78 acre parcel on East Fairhouse Road that's being gifted to the town from the Guilford Land Conservation Trust. The property is noted on the Woodland subdivision map as open space, 0.7 acres, and by the assessor's office, it's parcel 093 OSC. The commission held walk meetings at the property on August 16, 2015, and approved the following motion at the January 7, 2016, meeting, that the Land Acquisition Commission recommended the town of Guilford accept the land transfer as a gift from the Guilford Land Conservation Trust with the following stipulation, A, that the land be designated in the deed as open space, if it has not already been stipulated, and B, a letter be sent to the adjacent neighbors notifying them of this land transfer. This parcel was part of the Woodland subdivision, Section 1, Open Space Set aside, approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 18, 1995. A section of the property was utilized as a temporary cul-de-sac until the adjacent Fairhouse Hill Estates was constructed. The property is currently utilized and owned by the Guilford Land Conservation Trust for parking, for group hikes to their adjacent East Woods Reserve, which connects into the town's East River Reserve property. The property was reviewed by the Conservation Commission, their Land Stewardship Committee, who also felt that this would provide a needed off-street parking for the northern access to the East River Reserve. I have here, it might be in your package, a location map of the property in the corner of East Fairhouse in Timber Lane, it's highlighted here in the reddish patch area here. It provides, if you can see, across the street from it is the East Woods property, the land trust, which is in the green here, and then this lighter green down here, in the small path here, is the town of Guilford property, which connects into the town's East River Reserve. So, the commission is looking for this to be moved to a town meeting for possible approval by the town of Guilford.
Okay. So, the action we're required to do this afternoon is to set a town meeting date, and the proposed date is March 21st, again, at 2016, 8:15 a.m. The motion made, seconded. Any discussion?
The only comment I'll make, Kevin, as I read the deed that's apparently on file, it is designated as open space land.
Correct.
So, as long as that remains in the transfer, that seemed to be a question in the.
Yeah, it's the land trust thing, we'd have the deed at the time, yeah. And the open space can be used for active or passive recreation, and being active requires some sort of parking to go along with it.
That fits the definition.
Will notice go out to all neighbors before the meeting?
We can fill a list of butters and send.
They're the only ones that I could see might have any concern. For all the rest of us, it's a parking lot, nice to open space.
The property does have one encumbrance of an easement to the adjacent property as a driveway, a small little 20-foot wide strip, which is currently as a paved driveway.
Is that the house to the west?
Yeah, it'd be the house on the west side.
Oh, yeah, you can see it on the map. Yeah.
Any further discussion, Pam?
I just wanted to add something that I did confirm with outside counsel about, you know, whether parking would be, is in line with the concept of an open space restriction, and he did confirm that it is.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to accuse myself. Okay, so it's three and one abstention. Okay, thank you for that, Tom. Okay, Kevin, thank you. Item nine, Town Engineer, Jim Portley, discuss and take possible action to set a town meeting date, guess what date? March 21st, 2016, 8:15 a.m., at the Guilford Town Hall for the Allison Pastore Field Associates Boundary Line Agreement, and B, ascend to planning and zoning for mandatory referral on the CGS 824. Afternoon, Joe.
Good afternoon.
Joe, you're either going to have to pare down the regular agenda, or bring coffee and don't spend everything.
That's a big old morning.
No, I think Town Council gave you stage.
No. The item before us is, it's a longstanding item, it relates to the old landfill that was on the property where the transfer station was located now, and it relates to the adjoining property, Allison Pastore Field Associates property, that is approved for development into multifamily housing. The line of the original fill for the, one of another term, the San Antwerp landfill, went beyond what has been found to be the property line between the two properties. At the time, the plans were submitted back in 1971, neither property had been surveyed, but the application to DDP at the time showed was that the tax bound boundary locations, and there's just somebody around who knows what happened at the time. I have to believe that whoever owned the property met out there and agreed, okay, this is where we own to, and you can fill here, and such and such. Since nobody's going to contradict that, unless we don't have anybody around who's there, I'm going to take that as possible. The landfill went on, it was closed, we subsequently opened a transfer station there in 1980, and then this issue has come about. To allow the developer, or the owner of the Allison Pastore Field property to go forward with his plans, develop, and be free of any contamination or thoughts that it was, its land was contaminated by the landfill, he's agreed to just redraw the property line, this is very simple engineering terminology, legal terminology for it, so that the town's boundary now encompasses all the land that was filled. And he shows that on a map, that he prepared, it's called a property, the town of Guilford, last revised February 4, 2016, after the discussions back and forth. This is the map. I know it's not clear, but I will show you that on the right side of the map, as I'm looking at, is the Boston Post Road. In the center of the map is, this is the transfer station, so, you go into the transfer station, the building is here, this is a line that, as you go into the property from Route 1, it's on the right side of the site. It's at the bottom of the slope, if you recollect, seen the site, that goes all the way down to, well, Billy Wetland, it was filled in 1971, '72, '73, '74. I think it's a very, it's a very good resolution for both the developer and the town. We draw the line, this becomes town property, it's about an acre of land, 0.9 acres, I think is what it's defined as, and frees the adjoining property of any encumbrance at all that would be there by the old landfill. So, I think it's a good solution, allows them to go forward with their plans, and resolves the town any problems, anything that was, we know that we filled that landfill, we didn't own the property at the time. This is a typical situation where the town would lease property from, in those days when a fellow named Morton Dimminstead, out of New Haven, we leased it from him, from approximately 1971 to 1980. We purchased the property in 80, because we then built the permanent transfer station there, we've been an investor. So, we purchased that at that time. Nobody thought much about the boundary. What it was, was, was. So, now we are, we are 40 years later, and we are getting results. So, I would recommend the board select and set your public hearing date. Show.
Tell me.
I'd like to just add that we hired Holman Comley, in particular Chris McCormick, who's an environmental lawyer, to review everything on this whole thing, to review their Phase 1, to negotiate the release and indemnity language that we insisted upon, so that the town would have comfort in the environmental pieces.
And I actually know Mort Dimminstead.
Do you really?
Yes.
I've never seen him. I was all Mort.
I haven't seen him in 20 years, so he may not be anymore.
Okay. That's interesting. Anyway, we do have a letter from the Land Acquisition Committee, was, as I said, this was sitting around for a long time, it's dated February 2010, and it was signed by, what was Callie Evans, but it said they were in favor of the, at the time it was an exchange, they were, at the time they were trying to exchange property for this piece. They've given up any consideration of that, they'll just give it to us, so. It was made out.
Yeah, great.
All right, so, wait, thank you, Jim. We need a motion to set the town meeting date, please?
So.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. All right. Item 10, acquaintance and resignation, we have one resignation, 10.1, act on resignation from Dave Wilcox from the Standing Building Committee. So move.
So move. That's second.
Second, okay. With regrets, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The only comment I made was, there was something in the minutes, that they're having trouble getting a quorum.
Yes, they are.
So, any volunteers for the Standing Building Committee would be greatly advised, anybody who has any expertise in contracting building would be very valuable to the town.
I've been preaching that to our town committee, if you guys did the same, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. 11, request for the use of town property, you have 11-1 to 11-3.
I would move that we approve the two uses and two signs as listed in the, in item 11 on the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Correspondence, we have two items, 12.1, the public work monthly report, and 12.2, the building officials monthly report. Item 13, old business, I don't have any, new business, I will remind the seniors who are under the senior tax reads, or who want to be enrolled in the senior tax reads program, that right now enrollment period has begun February 1st, and goes till May 15th, so please mark your calendars, or get down to the assessor's office as soon as possible, and that would be once you have your tax return completed, but don't forget to apply, because if you don't apply, you will not be in the program. Remember, it's February 1st to May 15th. Anybody else? Public forum, limited to three minutes on any item. Anybody wishing to address the board? Seeing none. Item 16. I have 16, 17, and 18, all are going to require an executive session, so I'll read all three of them, and then we'll go from there. 16, discuss RFQP, number signed 2-1516, operation management of the Guilford Lake Golf Course. An executive session may be required to discuss the proprietary and confidential business information on bids. Since we're discussing a contract, the, this will require an executive session. I'm going to invite the in-house counsel and Mr. Dunsmore from the Golf Course Commission on that one. Item 17, discuss and take possible action to accept a recommendation by the Land Acquisition Commission to hire an appraiser for the possible acquisition of property, and executive session may be required, will be required in this case, and I'm going to invite Pam Millman, our in-house counsel, on that one. And Kevin McGee, where is he? There he is, okay. And 18, consider and take possible action on an employment contract between the town of Guilford and in-house counsel, and we will invite, we don't need anybody on that one, so, okay. Ron, we will come back for a vote after piece number 18, the last one, so, okay. Okay, we'll start with the golf course first.
Joe, I think it's a session.
And move that we go into executive session.
Move we go into executive session, and then we move 17, that will take a very brief amount of time, I think. We'll get Kevin out here.
Okay, that's fine.
That should take.
Okay. You moved it, you seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we're back, we need a vote to come out of executive session.
Move that we come out of executive session and the public, that's second. Purpose of the vote.
Okay. Second, motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item 16, we are taking no action on?
Correct.
All right. Item 17.
I would move that we authorize the hiring of an appraiser for the possible acquisition of a property.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item 18 is to consider and take action on an employment contract between the town of Guilford and in-house counsel. Do I have a motion?
I would move that we approve the contract that was presented and discussed.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Inandis, thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn? So move.
So move. Second, second.
Second, all in the favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone, we're adjourned at 4:36. Thank you all. Thank you, Ron, I appreciate it.